Okay. My apologies for being a minute late. Just for verification, we did call ourselves to order and do our statement of notice and moment of silence and all that at five before we went into executive session. We are returning from executive session where we discussed legal issues, contractual issues, and personnel recommendations. We do have one action that we have to take. Would you like to discuss it first?
I can discuss it first. Can you hear me, Joe?
Yep, you're on.
If you know me at all, you know I don't like to talk about myself and the accomplishments. I do love talking about the district. And what I'm about to put you through is about two or three minutes of anxiety on my part to talk about me, and I apologize in advance. But the people who do all this work are the people in this room, the team in this room, the team of teachers, the team of administrators. They have made us successful under my leadership. So let me just go ahead and read this. "It is difficult to put into words the emotions I feel as I announce my retirement as superintendent of the Fort Mill School District. My official retirement date will be June 30, 2025, though I have committed to working with the incoming superintendent through December 31, 2025, to ensure a smooth transition. Serving this district has been the honor of my professional life. Over the past 45 years in Fort Mill and 49 years total in public education, I have been privileged to work alongside dedicated educators, staff, board members, parents, and community members, all committed to one goal: providing the very best for our students. For the past 15 years as superintendent, I've had the privilege of leading one of the finest school districts in South Carolina and the nation, and I am deeply grateful for the trust placed in me throughout my tenure. Reaching this milestone is a testament to the opportunities for growth, learning, and collaboration that I have experienced here. I have seen firsthand what can be accomplished when a community comes together with a shared vision for education. The Fort Mill School District is built on a legacy of excellence, and its success is a direct reflection of the incredible people who make up our school family. Together, we have navigated remarkable growth while maintaining a strong academic foundation. I am especially proud of our ability to sustain high levels of student achievement amid rapid expansion and of the community's commitment to ensuring every child has access to the resources they need to succeed. The recent support for our four-year-old early childhood center is just one example of how this district continues to prioritize students at every stage of their educational journey. This center will allow the district to better prepare all students for academic success during their most formative years. As I prepare to close this chapter of my career, what I will cherish most are the relationships I have built with so many of you. Fort Mill is more than just a district; it is my family. Through every challenge and triumph, the outstanding team we have assembled in the district has helped us remain a close-knit community where everyone's contributions matter. It is my sincere hope and prayer that the next leader of this district will carry forward with this culture of connection, collaboration, and unwavering dedication to our students that is highly unique to Fort Mill. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this incredible journey. I will forever be grateful for the years I have spent here and for the lifetime friendships and memories I take with me. Thank you." Got through it.
Yeah, so begrudgingly, we do have an action to take. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation or retirement, as it really is, of our leader, Dr. Epps.
Second.
And...
And that that...
Under the terms as discussed in our executive session.
Yeah. Yeah, all that.
To clarify, we actually have it in writing.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've been talking about it for a while. He's been saying it was time. But I keep telling him he's... We're gonna make him do the swan song, but not yet, because he's gotta go all the way through the rest of the year.
He's got what to do.
So we still got...
Your superintendent.
That's right. We still got...
Until June 30th.
We got lots of stuff ahead of us between now and June 30th. Any other comments from the board? All those in favor of accepting Dr. Epps's decision to retire at the end of the school year in accordance with the terms and conditions of the agreed-upon separation agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, but so does this meeting carry on, so...
That's right. We got work to do.
All right, yeah, we do have real business to attend to that we've gotta keep moving forward. And we have some exciting things, because we've got some recognitions and spotlights and other things. So our next official agenda item is the recognition related to our program of studies, and I believe Dr. Gail Scroggs is gonna talk to us about this.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know how we can go about business as usual, but congratulations, Dr. Epps. And at least it's good news we're gonna jump into something that's a... something you like, is student recognition. At this time, I would like to call forward Mr. Tyler Hooks and his instructor, Ms. Tiana Scott from Nation Ford. Come on over here. I'm gonna say a few words, then I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Scott to talk about Tyler. It is my honor this evening to recognize Tyler, a Nation Ford Falcon, whose exceptional creativity led to the selection of the design for the 2025-2026 Program of Studies. That's what we have on the screens, and the board members have a hard copy version of it right there in front of them. Tyler was guided and supported by his digital art teacher, Ms. Tiana Scott. Through his hard work, he created a design that stood out from more than 50 submissions. His work was selected as our cover work for this year. The Program of Studies is an essential resource for families in our district, for teachers, for students, for parents, for counselors, for admin, for everybody. It really has all of the courses that we could possibly have, all of the academic pathways, woven into one document, so it's really the heartbeat of planning for high school and what lies beyond. So my sincere thanks to Tyler for putting together such a fantastic design for us. I just want to extend my gratitude for his artistic vision on this, and to Ms. Scott for her dedication and guidance. She is masterful at her work, because there were lots and lots of talented submissions from Nation Ford High School and Catawba Ridge High School, and it kinda goes back and forth on who gets selected. It's not meant that way, but it kinda ping-pongs, and this year, Nation Ford came out on top, so congratulations to them. The finished product is gonna go out to more than 1,000 families in our district as they launch into ninth-grade IGP's and making selections for high school. And again, I just want to say thank you very much, Tyler. You did a fantastic job.
I'm already, like, trying so hard not to tear up. So I wrote this for you, Tyler? Okay, wait, I'm trying not to? Okay. Before I talk about how incredible Tyler is as a graphic designer, I want to take a moment to recognize the amazing person he is, because the two are deeply intertwined. I'm sorry, I'm making this awkward. It has been an absolute joy watching Tyler grow, not just as a designer, but as an individual. In Level 1, Tyler was quiet, yet incredibly determined, always willing to work diligently, never missing a step, and consistently challenging himself to do his personal best. And now seeing him bloom into someone so bright, confident, and full of humor has been such a privilege. Watching this once-quiet student laugh, smile, and engage while creating outstanding work has been one of the greatest rewards of teaching. Tyler isn't just talented, he is generous with his knowledge, offering authentic feedback and sharing his understanding... Oh, no! ...of design tools to support his peers. That kind of leadership and collaboration is what every teacher hopes for in a student. As a designer, Tyler is exceptional. He pushes himself, explores new techniques, and actively seeks feedback to refine his work. I always tell my students, "Trust yourself, and I'll give you feedback. But if you feel strongly about your vision, you can always tell me no." Tyler has found his voice, and one of the most rewarding things has been hearing him confidently say, "No, I don't think that will work." That confidence, that self-assurance, is what growth is all about. Tyler, it has been an absolute pleasure to witness your journey, both as a person and as a designer. I'm sad I won't have you in Level 3, but Ms. Miller will have you, so I'll just pop on by. But I feel lucky to have had you the past two years, and you're gonna do amazing things, and I can't wait to see where your talents will take you. All right.
Love it. It's awesome. And for those who have not had a student in high school yet, it's true, I can't tell you the number of times I pulled out the book and referred to it, so it is a very important book, and a lot of people will be seeing that cover. Our next item is listed under Reports and Information, but it's about the Fort Mill History Museum and some high school representation. Yeah, I saw David, but it said Ashley, so I wasn't sure if Ms. Ashley Taylor or David Ward was gonna come up. Okay, come on up.
My name is Ashley Taylor. I'm the new treasurer... I mean, I'm sorry, the new chairman of the Fort Mill History Museum. I was the treasurer, but now I have been upgraded, so... I would like to take this time to thank everyone for their continued support of this program. It's been such a great privilege to have high school students present in our board meetings and just getting more involved with the history museum. We have another great team of high school representatives this year. They attended our board retreat this weekend and had a lot of great ideas for the upcoming year. They will host our third annual Memory Mill, a Fort Mill event, in the fall. This event contains competitions in media, art, literature, and then a history bowl. Please keep an eye out on our website for when that event is, because I've been the last couple of years, and it's such a fun event. So it always has a great turnout, too. As in years past, we also will interview the students and put their interviews in our Our Town video collection. It's a collection of interviews that we have of people who have lived, worked, or are a part of Fort Mill, and so we think it's crucial to get their perspectives while they're on the board with us and add those to our collection. And this year, we're also encouraging the high school reps to volunteer with the museum and help keep it open, because we're staffed by volunteers. So many of them have already picked up Saturday shifts in helping us keep the museum open, and we hope to see them at events throughout the year, and we welcome their participation. So last but not least, I will introduce the reps. I know two of them are here. So from Catawba Ridge, we have Sharika Akuraju. From Fort Mill High School, we have Macy Simpson. And from Nation Ford High, we have Aiden Blackman.
Congratulations. I know it's really important. We have so many people that have moved here to really understand what has made Fort Mill great over all these years and learn a little bit about the history long before many of us got here. We now have a school spotlight for Pleasant Knoll Elementary School, Chad Allen.
Good evening. So obviously, teaching and learning is what... at the heart of what we do, and the majority of that is the academic piece. But we're actually gonna talk a little bit tonight about the life skills and behavior piece we've been working on over the last couple of years. And this journey for us came when we saw that we had some issues that we needed to address in our building with student behavior or skills, that we needed to teach the student replacement skills. And honestly, the majority of this work has come over the last year, where we went to a conference in December and saw some stuff that we really liked. So we've done a lot in the last year. And the quote up here is something that really encompasses kinda who we are. It's too often we forget that discipline really means to teach, not to punish. So we're talking about not only the reactive part, but teaching the replacement skills and the proactive part as well. So we do address the profile of the South Carolina graduate with this in the elementary level. And a big background piece for us is something we've done over the last few years, is our commitments to each other and our commitments to students, and to maintain positive outlooks despite setbacks and stressful situations. And we always joke with our kids, I mean, our teachers, like, you know, there's nothing stressful about this job at all. But to make sure we're being positive. And then the big piece for us is our commitment to students, and we go over this every staff meeting we have, anytime we have a behavior PLT, which we'll talk about. When we speak of students, we focus on strengths through positive language with understanding that all students learn in different ways, all students learn at different rates. Some students lack prerequisites, skills, and knowledge, and we talk about it a lot of times with functional and behavioral skills, that is very applicable. Some students lack essential academic behaviors, and some students do have a home life that is counterproductive to academic success, but also functional and behavior success. So, but we all believe that all students do deserve to learn at high rates. So some positive change we have seen, we're gonna talk a little bit tonight. I have Rachel Driver, one of our assistant principals, and Jennifer Bailey, our lead teacher. And the best part about being the principal is you can delegate and not have to talk that much. So, but the best thing we've seen is the data increase for our... from our teachers with looking at discipline overall, 98% of our teachers agreed or strongly agreed that our procedures are applied fairly to our students. That's a 20% increase from the fall of 2022. And 97% of our staff said the biggest change in our building is the CI3T process we've gone through, Put Your Best Paw Forward, and the tiered instruction we have provided around behavior. And just a few quotes, I'm not gonna read them, but just quotes about mindset, and I'm not gonna lie, we are still changing mindset in our building to say that consequences themselves do not change behavior. We have to teach the kids and be both proactive and reactive, and that's part of the MTSS triangle, which we oftentimes relate to academics, but we are now applying that to everything across our building. We'll talk about our behavior PLTs, which is something we're doing monthly, our Put Your Best Paw Forward campaign. The Tier 1 instruction should really encompass 80%, and we're seeing about an 87% rate for our students, which really allows us to have that 13% to focus on them intently with behavior academies, which Ms. Driver will talk about, and I mean, Ms. Driver, Ms. Bailey will talk about, and then the intensive interventions, the individual goals, which they'll talk about as well. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Ms. Driver, oh, sorry. But we do have a behavior team and a life skills team. Our entire staff is involved, and the CI3T process, our entire staff was involved, but our counselors, our school psychologists, our RBT, which is a game-changer position for us in our building, our administration, our lead teacher are the core of this work. So now, Ms. Driver.
I'm gonna walk you through some of our Tier 1 strategies, which basically just means the strategies that we're using for all of our students to make sure that they're achieving success in their life skills and behavior. So our goal at the Tier 1 level is always to prevent harm and have school-wide systems that set all of our students and staff up for success in every setting, the cafeteria, the playground, the classroom, the hallway, every setting across our school. Through CI3T, we've been able to establish some really explicit expectations for our students, and this has helped them set up for success. So if you've ever walked into our building, it like hits you in the face. It says, "Put your best paw forward" everywhere. You hear it, you hear our teachers saying it, but that consistency is what is making our students so successful. At the beginning of the year, we have a big rollout where the teachers will use videos, talk about what personal responsibility, attitude, and work ethic look like, feel like, and sound like, and explicitly walk the students through what they should do in every area. Throughout the year, we use tickets, which we actually gave each one of you so that you could see to recognize when students are doing the right thing. And we pair that with behavior-specific praise. So if you noticed on the back, it has a little specific comment about what we appreciate about you. And so when we do this, we tell our teachers, "We want you to verbalize this," so that the students can also hear what the other kid's doing right. So hopefully, they wanna do it so that they can earn a ticket as well. But really, it's just about teaching kids how to be good people and do the right thing. One thing that I did want to add is that through CI3T being a district-wide process, it's helped us learn. From Sugar Creek, for example, we heard at the CI3T meeting that they had these amazing consistent volume levels where they could say a number, and all the kids got quiet. And we were like, "What's that? We want that." So we have implemented that this year, and it has been a game changer. It's been great. And so we teach, we reteach, and we reinforce. When they come back from winter break, we have an expectation reset that our schoolwide uses. Like, this year, the teachers got together and each group videoed themselves in different areas of the school doing the wrong thing, not putting their best paw forward, and the kids watched the video, and then they corrected their teachers. It was great. Teachers enjoyed doing the wrong thing, and kids enjoyed correcting them. So it worked great. Oh, no. There we go. A few other things we do for all of our kids. Every early release day, we have grade-level assemblies where our administration and our related arts team can get in front of each group of students and talk about what they're doing well, celebrate with them, and then talk about what we need them to do to do better, and honestly, just have some fun. We've had lip sync battles there, minute-to-win-it challenges, just a lot of things, just to show them that we understand what it's like to be a student, and we need you to make sure you're putting your best paw forward for our school. We also have used our restorative practices training that the district gave us this summer to have paw circles with each class, so that we can get there, we can show them the circle structure, show them those guidelines, so that when they do have conflict with each other, we can bring them in and use that same structure to help solve it. Of course, these tickets are great, and a lot of the kids just need the ticket. Sometimes we even see pictures of like doors at home decorated with the tickets. It's really cute. But we do have a lot of incentives that the kids can use those tickets on as well, which encourage them. I know through CI3T, it's provided a ton of consistency, which has been great and one thing that's helped our kids strive for success, but also the teachers have a ton of autonomy in it, and they have truly internalized it, and they are proud of it, and they have used strategies that they know work best for their age students and the kids in their class. So these are a few different ways that our teachers have really made it their own in their classrooms. The other part of the Tier 1 strategies that we really use, once a month, we meet in behavior PLTs. So essentially, we just bring a group of teachers together to collaboratively address student behavior concerns and develop meaningful strategies to support positive behavior and build life skills. This is truly, I think, what I am most proud of as an administrator at Pleasant Knoll. It is amazing to walk into a room and hear a group of teachers talk about their experiences and all the amazing strategies that they are using to support their students and be proactive, to help them not make mistakes and learn from them when they do. I could talk for days about it, but I'll just tell you a few of the main things that we've accomplished. We now have a behavior resource bank for our teachers that is full of resources that they use in their classroom to help their kids learn, like apology templates or student voice surveys for why are you missing work, or why are you not motivated, role-play cards that they can use with them, think sheets, you see one even connects to our paw expectations. And then another thing we're really proud of is that our teachers came up with teacher responses to minor behavior menus per grade level that are extremely age-appropriate. Like, a kindergartner might be misbehaving on the carpet, so they might move back to their seat for 10 minutes, but then they're rejoining right away. That may be a little more extreme in fifth grade. So it's really nice to see that our teachers are extremely age-appropriate in creating those. We did this year look at behavior data, and our grade levels came together and said, "Okay, basically, our minor and major discipline referrals are showing that they need help in specific areas." So if you see up here, this is just a sampling of the behavior goals that our teams are working on. Like, in kindergarten, they're working on personal responsibility by following directions the first time. Second grade, it gets a little more intense, they need to learn how to respond appropriately to conflict, and by fourth grade, we're working through work ethic. And that's what our data showed us through the PLC process when we worked through that. And then finally, the last part is we do react for all. For example, our kids weren't the best behaved on the bus right before winter break, so we decided to start mystery bus monitors, where there's one kid on the bus that's a mystery. I think they all know at this point, but it's supposed to be a mystery. And they are looking for one student to recognize for doing the right thing, and then we announce it on the morning announcements. And if you've ever been in an elementary school, you know that is like a big deal to have your name announced on the announcements. So this is like a little sweet note. It says, "Dear Colson, I think that you have been outstanding. Lately, you have been kind and welcoming to everyone you meet. I have chosen you because I thought that you have been putting your best paw forward. Signed, your mystery bus monitor." So it's sweet that the kids are recognizing each other. And then finally, reacting for all, our behavior data does show that our boys mostly show externalizing behavior, so our school has put together a boys' task force of teachers at our school that are motivated by this, and they are going to look at the research and put together some teacher-friendly strategies of how do we motivate boys, how do we engage boys, and how do we inspire boys.
So research tells us that even with all these amazing efforts at the Tier 1 level for all of our students, approximately 20% will still need additional support to meet those expectations, and that's where our intervention process comes in. So the backbone of our intervention process is that it ensures equitable access for all of our students. It is based in data-driven decision-making, and it provides specific targeted support for skill growth. It is not reliant on personal opinions, gut feelings, loud voices, or other reactive measures to connect students with the supports that they need. Our process begins by looking at our universal screening data first, which is the SRSSIE screener. We pull the names of any students who received in a three, which is considered the high-risk category, for showing internalizing or externalizing behavior struggles. We also pull the names of any students who received two or more minor incidences, minor behavior incidences, or one or more office referrals during that specific quarter. And then names are finally also added to our list if they came through a referral from our teachers, administration, behavior team, or parents. So one of those three pieces of data gets our student's name on the list, which generates a further data conversation about them, and we begin pulling more qualitative information about them, qualitative data. So we send a survey to our teachers to gather some more information of exactly the concerns that they're witnessing in the classroom setting. And then, once that information is all gathered, our behavior team and life skills team uses all of that information to determine students who are in need of Tier 2 intervention. So from there, we then further gather more diagnostic information from our teachers, which is using our Behavior Academy matching sheet. This is a survey that helps determine which Tier 2 group might be best appropriate to meet the needs of our students. After parents are notified and intervention goals are set, our team then delivers small group Tier 2 interventions through our Behavior Academy structure, which teaches life skills and replacement behaviors. Our current Behavior Academies include personal responsibility, hands-off, social skills, upstanders, civility, motivation, and emotional regulation. We're also looking to add self-esteem and impulse control for next school year, as those needs have been warranted in our building. These academies run for approximately seven weeks and meet twice a week. And there's a list of our academies. So research also indicates that a few of our students will still need more than the instruction they receive at both the Tier 1 and Tier 2 levels. This is where the CI3T process has really helped our school with Tier 3 interventions. We've pulled a lot of resources from them. So students who need in Tier 3 intensive support, they'll receive individualized plans to further help their needs, and it helps to target the functions of their concerning behaviors, which are typically seeking a sensory, escape, attention, or tangible need. These interventions could include an individualized de-escalation plan, additional recess and a structured plan, individualized counseling, and other plans that support their individual needs. So in about one year of doing this work, we have seen our results show that what we are doing is working, and what we are putting in place is improving the outcomes for our students. Since implementing this system, we've seen a 3% increase in our student screening in the low-risk category for both internalizing and externalizing behaviors, and that is all based on the SIRC screener data. We've received a lot of positive feedback, not only from our staff, but from our parents and our students.
So last, and will be done, is we just have a short little video from some of our kids talking about our Put Your Best Paw Forward process.
We put our best paw forward here at Pleasant Knoll. What does P stand for?
Personal Responsibility.
What does A stand for?
Attitude.
And what does W stand for?
Effect.
Put your best paw forward, it means that you show personal responsibility, and personal responsibility means like you don't put your hands on other And personal responsibility means like you don't put your hands on other people. And when you, and a positive attitude means like you are like not being mean to anybody and like not like hurting people's feelings.
I put my best paw forward by using personal responsibility to me, which means owning up to my own mistakes. A positive attitude, that means having a smile on my face, even when things get tough. And great work ethic means, meaning that I get my work done when it's time.
It means being nice and being like respectful.
Putting my best paw forward to me means in personal responsibility to take care of your computer, your things that you use daily.
Attitude means to me that when you have a bad start on the day, don't mean to your friends. Try to control your emotions.
It means put your best paw forward by showing personal responsibility, like respecting your teacher and doing what is expected of you with no hesitation and having a positive attitude whenever things get tough. And showing good work ethic by working hard on your assignment.
To me, putting my best paw forward means doing more than you're supposed to do, being humble and being positive and always trying your best.
Positive attitude when you walk into the classroom and be having a great work ethic when the teacher gives you a paperwork.
Showing personal responsibility, like keeping, like being responsible with all your things.
And why do we put our best paw forward at Pleasant Knoll?
So, um, this could be a better place. So lots of people like to come.
Then you can have a positive attitude to somebody else and it's reflecting on yourself to other people.
It is important because when you show a positive attitude, it reflects on other people, like younger students.
It's important to put your best paw forward so that everyone else around you can think you're a good person. And you can really make the world a better place if you're nicer, trying your best, and having a good attitude.
Whenever you put your best paw forward, you kind of are setting an example for other students to follow. And with other students following that example, it'll make Pleasant Knoll more pleasant.
Cause so, so it's pleasant.
And, and it cause, and it, cause we're all friends in this school.
What do you like about Pleasant Knoll?
Um, I like that people are nice here. And I like that I have friends.
And we are blessed to have some really great kids too. So, um, any questions? All right.
Not a question, but I know when we were there, uh, for a school visit, man, they were all talking about putting that best paw forward. They were, they were reciting those things. They knew what the PAW stood for. So.
It is expected in our building that you know what it stands for.
Definitely resonated with the kids.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Awesome job.
Thank you.
All right. We have got two sets of me, uh, meeting minutes to approve. The first one is from January 7th, whether there are any adjustments or corrections.
No ma'am.
Those will stand with unanimous consent. And then our retreat on January 22nd. Any adjustments or corrections there?
No ma'am.
All right. Also with approved with unanimous consent. Um, I've got two cards for public participation. Um, so when I call your name, if you'll come to the podium, um, you have up to five minutes to address the board. Just give us your name and address. Um, and then it's your time. Starting with Brandon Langford.
It's all right. We'd like to switch.
Okay.
You're gonna go first?
Order doesn't matter to me. Marissa Robbins, come on up.
My name is Marissa Robbins. I live at 1126 King's Bottom Drive. Um, good evening, school board, superintendent Epps, Mr. Young, Mr. Burke, faculty, staff, parents, and community members. My family loves our community and the friends that we've made. My children go to Pleasant Knoll and we love it there. You can see why. Um, but when we learned that our children would be assigned to the Flint Hill Schools next to the Sylfab plant where chemicals could have a catastrophic risk, we knew we could not do that, not in good conscience. We could not send them there. That forced our family to make, um, drastic changes to what our, the future looks like for us. We are not alone. Families across this community are making drastic changes, not by choice, but by necessity, because the district has not acted. Some are moving, others are homeschooling, choosing online or charter schools, while others are turning to private education. The Sylfab schools have become a place that families are desperate to avoid. Because of the, of your inaction, children are being robbed of the chance to attend their own community schools that their parents pay taxes for. I will now read the names of 170 children, the first names only, um, whose paying families have been rearranging their lives and will not be attending that school, though they are zoned next year. Hannah Reeves, Ollie, Joey, Maddie, Annabelle, Julia, Melanie, Julie, John William, Callum Anderson, Sullivan, Bryson, Cameron, Carson, Lucas, Daniel, Aubrey, Allison Faith, Jackson, Robbie, Calvin, Kramer, Whitney, Caroline, Elizabeth, Matthew, Alex, Kaylee, Brenly, Sabina, Grayson, Christian, Olivia, Eliza, Callaway, Mary, Mandy, Anna, Rebecca, Aiden, Quinn, James, Lee, Michael, Laura, Everett, Rollins, Meredith, Ava, Gwen, Ruth, Avery, Lynn, Caleb, Olivia, Milo, June, Sawyer, Henry, Max, Zoe, Caleb, George, Addison, Claire, Harrison, Nicholas, Madison, Remedy, Cooper, Abigail, Catherine, Aiden, Maddox, Christian, Drew, Luke, A- Ally, April, Anna Kate, Leonardo, Lucas, Emily, Carly, James, Lauren, Mary, Ethan, Rosie, Walker, Andrew, Jenny, Rain, Kaylee, Laney, Kaden, Brooke, Mary Kate, Mick, Ruthie, Molly, Micah, Jeremiah, Sage, Bryant, Elliot, Lilian, Anna Rose, Charles, Lucy, Gideon, Demi, Christian, Owen, Lexi, Mason, Evelyn, Jose, Ava, Owen, Logan, Paige, Christina, Avery, Castile, Jacob, Ray, Kramer, Carrie, Lexi, Ellie, Harper, Ruby, Alexandra, Bat, Bradley, Heidi, Harvey, Claire, Caitlin, Carter, Alexander, Claire, Isabella, Jack, Raina, Abel, Lilian, Whit, Carly, Anna, Cora, Stephen, Donald, Kramer, Evan, Sutton, River, Amy, Jackson, Draymond, Hyder, Calvin, Davis, Ruth, Jimmy, David, Isaac, and Evelyn. These names are only the names of the parents that were comfortable with me sharing their child's first name. And they're only the ones that I was able to get in touch with easily. I did not try to seek out anybody. These are people who have already contacted me as I am working against moving Sylfab. There are far more children than what are just on that list. I hope you remember every name as you lay down and think about, I want you to think about Lily and Anderson. Children who should be able to walk into their community school but cannot because their safety is being gambled with. This is not a choice parents want to make, but until you act, we will, because their lives matter more than your silence. I have 20 more seconds and I want to say, I understand it is a privilege that I can move. I understand it is a privilege. I can stay in this district and I am able to do that. There are a lot of parents that can't and they can't send their kids to private schools. And they can't do, they can't, uh, take their kid to a charter school. And they're really, really, really scared. That's it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ant, Mr. Langford.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Langford, 550 South Portman Lane, Fort Mill. Chairwoman Spears, tonight I'd like to speak about a subject familiar to you, given your background, risk management. As you know, a risk manager identifies risks, assess the probability and potential impact by engaging experts and stakeholders to develop a risk response plan. Until that risk is fully mitigated, you monitor and manage that risk to completion. On two separate occasions, January 9th and January 21st of this year, I was proud to receive an email, text, and voicemail from Fort Mill School District. A few quotes from that email. According to the National Weather Service, there is the potential for winter weather in our area. Forecasts suggest that we may experience snow and ice, which could create unsafe travel conditions for buses and car riders. In light of this information, all Fort Mill schools and district facilities will be closed on Friday, January 10th. The email goes on, we appreciate your understanding and cooperation as we prioritize the safety of our students and staff during this weather event. This is good risk management. A threat was identified. You consulted with experts. You were transparent with stakeholders and made the inconvenient but right decision to ensure the safety of staff, teachers, and students by not opening the schools. Three days prior, on January 6th, WSOC Channel 9 news reporter Tina Terry published a story titled, "Some Parents Plan to Not Send Kids to the New Fort Mill Elementary School Near Sylfab Plant." In an interview, Chief Communications Officer Joe Burke was quoted, "The new school will get rid of overcrowding and enrollment freezes at other schools. The district is aware of current litigation and watching to see what happens." A direct quote, "We know there's a lot of court challenges that are going on right now. We're not a part of those, but they are happening and they can make determinations and things could change at this facility. So we're not sure exactly how everything's going to turn out." Another quote by Ms. Terry, Joe Burke said, "They, the Fort Mill School District, do everything they can to ensure the safety of staff and students by working with agencies responsible for safety." This statement doesn't imply bad risk management. This is laissez-faire leadership. Why does this board apply reasonable care and empathy when it comes to unsafe roads but fails to act on threats posed by their next-door neighbor? This board and this district does not get to pick and choose which risks to address and which to ignore or transfer to parents. Contrary to this board's claims that we're a bunch of internet researchers, we've been working with directors of local universities and other concerned parents who have PhDs in chemistry, environmental science, public health, and risk management to pore over Sylfab's DES filings and how it contradicts the inputs of their own risk management plan. We've consulted local first responders to understand their current capacity to deal with explosions and chemical leaks. And I can safely say York County, and even more so, Little Old Fort Mill, is woefully unprepared to deal with an emergency from Sylfab. Sylfab's RMP is inaccurate at best and a deception at worst. Since October 3rd, 2023, this board has received escalations of the risk posed by Sylfab. That's 490 days to act on this matter. What are you doing to protect us from these risks? Have you consulted with a third-party environmental risk firm? We are desperate for even a modicum of transparency of proactive measures taken by this board or the district. Beyond the safety and health risk, bottom line, this is a zoning violation. The authority of the BZA's 5-0 decision should be respected, protected, and adhered to. Failing to stand up and take action on this legal issue is like letting a drunk driver take the keys to your car and drive you home. On November 5th, this board chose to place blind faith in a citizen-run nonprofit to fight a Goliath like Sylfab, trusting that we, the people, would do the dirty work to resolve this issue favorably in court. No doubt, we will win this fight, but it would be a lot easier with your help. I don't think it's a coincidence that the one board member who has children impacted to attend these schools voted his conscience in opposition on November 5th. Hundreds of concerned parents and 6,200 local petitioners know you didn't cause this problem, but don't, as Mr. Burke says, watch to see what happens. These are uniquely extreme circumstances. We don't have to solve overcrowding this year. Don't continue to neglect your legal and ethical responsibilities to teachers and students. If you fail at the basics, there will be no achievements to celebrate. It's never too late to fight for what we all know is the legal and right thing to do. You all have my contact info. Please let me know how we can have more than five minutes of a one-way conversation to advocate for children's health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have got several staff reports, starting with the monthly financials for Ms. Lordo.
Good evening. Um, tonight in your packet, um, you have the monthly financials for December 31st. We are now officially halfway into the budget year, the fiscal year. Um, as we would expect, we saw, um, December shift us with more real estate taxes coming in. Uh, total revenues to date are now 101,743,000 compared to expenditures of 106,448,000. So year-to-date, we were still slightly into the fund balance of 4.7 million, but it was less than same period last year, we were a little over 6 million into the fund balance. Um, real estate taxes for December were 19,117,000 compared to a little over 18 million that same period last year. Um, so very much as we would expect, um, for real estate tax collections. Um, vehicle tax collections continue to not disappoint me. Uh, 1,800,000 for vehicle taxes for December. And Fee and Lou, uh, tax collections were 2,885,000. Um, but December is a month where we start shifting with tax collections. And if you look at our nice new graphic charts, thanks to Jonathan Bradstreet of our technology department, who helps me with this every month, you can see that we're now shifting into a period where our local revenues are our driving force of revenues and not our state revenues. So just wanted to make sure that I point that out for your benefit and the benefit of those watching that we are dependent on our, now the periods of local tax revenues with tax collections. Um, any questions about December or year-to-date? Okay, I'll move on into impact fees. Um, as of close of business yesterday, we have collected 73,034,370. So over 73 million in impact fees have been collected. We've earned interest, um, on those funds of 6.9 million. Those are kept in a separate escrow account on deposit with York County. And Dec, um, January was consistent with what we've seen. We had 28 homes and 13 multifamily or townhomes that were permitted and paid in January. So, um, since the, um, beginning of this new impact fee for single-family, we've collected on 2,855 units and multifamily townhomes, 1,764 units. So a total of 4,619 units. January brought in 664,000, uh, dollars for the month of January. Um, we were slightly under our average calendar year last year at about 800,000, but, um, we are seeing that, you know, picking back up now. And that's what I expect for the next couple of months. Um, our comparable data for single-family and multifamily, um, we're still about 20% more um, for the most current 12 months versus last year on single-family and about 36% less on multifamily. As we have seen a little bit of a slowdown with apartments, but certainly the townhomes are now picking back up. And that's what I'm seeing a lot of townhome addresses, um, when I see the daily reports from York County. Um, as you know, we have, um, received a positive favorable recommendation from the York County Planning Commission in January, um, on our new impact fee plan um, that was presented to the York County Planning Commission in December and January. We now, um, are scheduled to, um, appear before the full York County Council. And the first reading, public hearing will be held on Monday, March the 3rd. We will have our, um, consulting firm, Tischler-Bice, present that evening to present, um, as well as, um, our construction management group, Lightner Construction, will present. Um, and we will present as we did for Planning Commission for first reading. And the second reading will be scheduled two weeks after that. And then two weeks after that will be the third reading with York County Council. Any questions on impact fees or our plan? Um, and then the last thing I want to mention, the state, um, is now rolling into their session and, uh, they will begin budget, state budget discussions. Uh, their calendar is slated to begin, the House Ways and Means Committee will meet, uh, the week of February 18th through 20th. They are the state budget writers and I will watch that very closely. Um, because what comes out of the House Ways and Means Committee will be the first, um, blush I get at what the state budget may look like, what the state teacher salary schedule may look like, and what our specific allocations out of the state aid to classroom funding, which is our primary state funding, what that will look like. Um, after they meet that week, it then has to be published for a week. So I anticipate I will receive those numbers around the first week of March. And I will start having an idea of what the state budget may look like for us here in Fort Mill. And then the full house will deliberate, um, the full, their plan on the budget, the week of March 11th. So March 11th through 13th is on their calendar for the, the full house. And then the Senate will be after that in April. So just wanted to give you an update on what I've heard as far as the calendar for the state budget this year. Any questions?
Questions for Leah?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is an instructional technology update with Mr. Spittle.
So I'm excited to update the board on the Technology Integration Team's new coaching model tonight. Before this, the district met the teacher technology proficiency standards by requiring teachers to earn three hours of professional development credit for each year. The team led about 75 different professional development sessions annually, and this was a very successful model for many years. However, we began receiving requests for changes a few years ago. This was based on liaison questions, feedback from professional development sessions, and talking with teachers. As Kirsten Hart and I began to consider changes, the idea of a coaching model rose to the top. As you know, Kirsten retired, and we hired Rachel Holloway to lead the team. I asked her to develop the idea of a coaching model and lead the change. I'm really proud of the team's hard work in making this a success and their efforts in supporting teachers. I will turn it over to Rachel to discuss how the model was developed and implemented.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rachel Holloway. I am the Director of Instructional Technology. And seated behind me, you will see, are fabulous and very talented, dedicated technology integration team. They truly are wizards. And they, just like you, are very deeply committed to the success of our students. As a former classroom teacher, all of us are former classroom teachers. We understand this profession's challenges and its rewards firsthand. We also know that continuous improvement is essential, and coaching cycles are just one of the many ways our team supports teachers in effectively integrating technology into their classrooms. As Brian mentioned, our teachers expressed a need for more targeted professional development and individualized support. As a former teacher, I remember attending PD sessions and being so excited about applying my new knowledge in my classroom. Then, once back in my building, and even with the best of intentions, I wasn't always able to fully implement because I felt like I needed additional support, accountability, and follow-up to integrate my new learning effectively. While valuable, we acknowledge that our previous certified staff technology proficiency model had to evolve to meet teachers' changing needs better. Our new coaching model follows, excuse me, allows for a structure, intentionality, and a follow-up that allows teachers to implement their goals with support, and we strive to be not in addition to, but in support of. Although our team has lots of experience working with educators, we understood that coaching requires a different set of specialized skills. To address these needs, last year, our entire team participated in a year-long coaching cohort alongside the Office of Educator Effectiveness, the Curriculum Department, and school-level lead teachers and academic coaches. The coaching cohort was invaluable in shaping our coaching model. With the hard work of other district leaders, the FMSD Coaching Academy was established, allowing opportunities for others in the district to participate in the cohort this year and hopefully for years to come. At the beginning of this year, we as a team proudly launched the Technology Integration Goal-Based Coaching Model. We narrowed our scope to teachers in their renewal cycle to ensure that it was focused and effective implementation. This allows us to provide intensive support to those teachers while also ensuring that every teacher has the opportunity to participate in coaching at some point in their career. We also made an exception for those K through 3rd grade teachers already participating in letters training. We wanted to avoid overwhelming them with additional requirements and because they're already engaged in such rigorous professional development. We communicated this shift from certified staff technology proficiency to our new coaching model, clearly and hopefully proactively, by including a letter in their, in teachers' renewal packets, sharing at principals' meetings, and sending out emails district-wide. We created our model with the intention that it would be integrated into teachers' yearly goal-setting process in the hopes that coaching is seen as a valuable support system aligned with their professional growth and goals. As you can see, our coaching model is encompassed in four easy steps and typically consists of three meetings. In step one, identify and understand the goal. The tech integration specialist works with the teacher to determine their goal to focus on during the coaching cycle. The goal is set by the teacher. It can be something they're struggling with or simply wanting to try out a new technology tool to enhance their lesson. Really, the sky is the limit. They can also choose to use a school-based or grade-level-specific goal if they prefer. Again, we're trying to help balance their plates and not add to it. In step two, investigate and select a strategy. Once the teacher has chosen their goal area to focus on, the tech integration specialist collaboratively works with that teacher to research and discuss potential strategies and tools available. Then the teacher selects one strategy specific to their need and a tool and/or tools to meet their goal. That takes us to step three, which is implement and observe. Teachers are supported while implementing these strategies in the classroom. This could mean the tech integration specialist visits their class and an opportunity to co-teach, model, or observe instructional practices. It could also mean the teacher implements independently and later shares student work, videos, photos, or links to materials that they created. And then the magic. In step four, which we feel like is the last and perhaps one of the most important steps, reflect and then determine next steps. This is where a lot of things kind of fall short, is that follow-through. The tech integration specialist meets with the teacher to reflect on their implementation, their strategies, and together they identify progress towards meeting their goal and any next steps to ensure continued success. We also discuss the coaching model, get their feedback, what worked, and what can be improved for the future. As you will hear and see from our team as they share some of our teacher spotlights, some coaching cycles are longer than others. It truly depends on the teacher's instructional goals and comfortability with tools. Some teachers want just a thought partner, someone who can help generate ideas, curate resources, and independently implement those, while others wanted to have support throughout the entire process. We feel completing the coaching cycle builds teachers' capacity for integrating technology effectively in their classrooms, but also boosting their confidence. They also can earn credit hours that can be used towards their recertification. And then just as a logistics, the team determined that splitting the coaching cycle between semesters would be effective given the approximate 120 participating teachers. This approach means that each tech integration specialist would have anywhere between 10 to 25 teachers that they would be coaching per cycle per semester. Investing in our teachers is the most effective way to invest in our students. This coaching model invests in their growth, which ultimately benefits our students and our entire learning community. In just a moment, you'll hear from the team, see examples of how the model supports our teachers' professional growth and in turn impacts student learning. You'll see their coaching goals, the process in action, and the phenomenal work that our students have created. And then following that, we have a short video featuring teacher testimonials about their experience with the coaching model. And so I proudly turn it over to the Poppy Adair to get us rolling.
Thank you, Rachel. One of the teachers I had the opportunity to work with was Denise Bard, the chorus director at Pleasant Knoll Middle School. And what I love most about the coaching cycle is getting to sit one-on-one with each of our teachers and helping them decide what they want to improve upon. So after meeting with Ms. Bard, she decided to improve student engagement. Sorry, let me start that. After meeting with Ms. Bard, she decided her biggest challenge was with an upcoming project with her 7th graders, and it was a research project on blues musicians. She felt like this had just fallen flat in years past and that students had gathered information, put it on a Google slide deck, and presented it in front of the class, and they just were really displaying a lot of apathy. They were really having a hard time engaging with the project. So she decided to improve student engagement to create a new presentation style. She utilized Canva to support student engagement and learning outcomes by having them write and create a podcast and song on a specific blues musician. We met a total of four times in person for about a six-week coaching cycle. The first thing we did was collaborate on creating a hyperdoc that she posted in her Google Classroom. It has three clickable links, project criteria, a project example, and a video tutorial. I was able to go into Ms. Bard's classroom on two separate occasions. The first, I came in and did about a 15-minute lesson where I taught the students how to use Canva, how to record their voice and extract that audio, and also how to design the slide to make it look exactly as they envisioned. The next class, I came in, and for about 10 minutes, I helped them learn how to create a song in Canva. Now, in Canva, you can't create a song from beginning to end, but you can combine songs together to make it more unique. So students had the additional task of creating a song that had at least two original songs to make it one. Some chose to do at least four, some stuck with two. So on the next slide, you're going to see two students' final project. It's not the entire podcast. I chose to focus on snippets just for time purposes. You're going to see the beginning, the end, and then just part of their song. So here we go.
Hello, my name is Jo.
And I'm Mason.
Welcome to our first-ever podcast.
Make sure to like and subscribe.
All right, let's get started.
Jo, have you ever heard of Louis Jordan?
I've listened to a couple of his songs.
What do you like about his songs?
Well, I like that he plays the saxophone.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
What is your favorite thing about Louis Jordan, Mason?
Well, I liked, I hope y'all enjoyed this first podcast ever. Goodbye from Mason and Jo. We are out.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Queen of Blues, Mrs. Mamie Smith.
Hi, thank you so much for having me.
Of course. What was it like entering showbiz at the age of 10? It must have been really scary and exciting.
Yes, it was a very exciting experience. I was very nervous at first, but it was a very fun opportunity, especially since I was so young.
That's amazing. So just to start off, when Harlem?
It was very fun and eventful.
That's great.
I had so much fun doing this.
Me too. It was so great meeting you.
Likewise.
Thank you for listening to the podcast.
So I hope you were able to hear the excitement in students' voices and hopefully envision how truly engaged they were. Ms. Bard felt this really impacted her students' engagement significantly, and she's looking forward to implementing this again in this upcoming semester. I want to introduce you to Megan Mongeli, and she will share one of her experiences.
Thank you, Poppy. So imagine a high school classroom where every student is actively participating, sharing ideas, and demonstrating a deeper understanding of the material. That's the power of effective technology integration. One of the teachers that I had the pleasure of working with was Amanda Norman. Amanda Norman is a dedicated marine science and environmental science teacher at Catawba Ridge High School, and she was eager to find ways to increase student participation and engagement during her lectures. So over a five-week coaching cycle, together we explored various options and decided to leverage Paradek, which is an interactive Google Slides add-on. We collaborated closely, examined her lesson goals, her student needs, and her existing Google Slides. I guided her on using Paradek's features like embedding questions, polls, and activities to create a more dynamic learning experience. So this is just an animated overview of how Amanda brought these strategies to life in her Paradek slides. As you can see, she was able to incorporate a variety of instructional strategies, including interactive questions, visual engagement activities, independent practice, differentiated instruction, and even some gamification elements. The slides provide opportunities for students to practice independently, applying their knowledge, and receiving immediate feedback on their understanding. Amanda quickly saw the benefits of integrating Paradek into her lessons. Her students were more engaged in participating actively in discussions. But she particularly loved that Paradek provided her with real-time student data, which allowed her to adjust her instruction on the fly and save time after the lesson. What's even more impressive is Amanda's continuous commitment to improvement and collaboration. After our initial collaboration on the mammals section, she independently applied these skills to her ecology lessons, showcasing her commitment to innovation. And she was also eager to share her success with her professional learning team, inspiring her colleagues to explore new ways to engage their students with Paradek. This ripple effect of knowledge sharing and collaboration is a key outcome of our coaching program. Amanda's story is just one of the many examples of the incredible work being done through our coaching program. And speaking of incredible work, I'd like to now invite my colleague Casey Nguyen to share another inspiring coaching success story.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share about our coaching cycle experiences. I got to work with Sam Kirkley, a 5th-grade teacher at Tiga K Elementary School. This was not our first time working together. It wasn't our last, and it won't be our last. Her excitement and her openness to collaboration makes working with her and her students super fun and just super energizing for me. Our coaching cycle, we had four face-to-face meetings over the course of nine weeks. What Sam wanted to do was she wanted to find a more efficient way to share data during PLT meetings so that they can have more meaningful discussions about student learning. At the time, they were working with a paper pencil assessment, and as you can imagine, how much time that takes to grade, analyze, collect, all that, and share. And that will take time and limited collaboration time. So to address this, we digitized the assessment, and that made it easier for her to collect, analyze, and share data. So by streamlining this process, getting quicker access to insights, it enabled her team to make better instructional decisions. We decided on pair assessment as the ideal tool to get the job done. Together, we digitized an ELA assessment. The process was quick. She was able to take advantage of automatic grading as well as detailed reporting. We used the free version of pair assessment, and this is a snip of one of the reports that she had access to. From this report, her and her team can quickly see trends and gaps in student learning. They were able to identify questions or, yes, questions that needed to be revisited or clarified, and most importantly, it was easy for her to share. So I hope that you can see how powerful this example is and how teachers can embrace technology to address classroom challenges. Thank you.
Up next, I'd like to call up Jeff Leitner.
Wonderful. Thank you, Casey. So from paint to pixels, imagine a classroom, an art classroom, where students can create beautiful artwork by hand and transform it into dynamic digital creations using the power of AI. This was an exciting reality for Rebecca Lips, an 8th-grade art class at Springfield Middle School. Rebecca wanted to expand her students' creative horizons by introducing them to AI tools. She was particularly interested in using Canva's AI features to help students reimagine their artwork in a digital space. Over a five-week coaching cycle, Rebecca and I collaborated to integrate Canva into her art curriculum. We discussed her goals, explored Canva's AI tools, and co-planned a lesson where students learned to digitize their artwork and use Canva's unique tools to enhance and transform their physical creations. The results were remarkable. Students were excited to experiment with Canva's AI features, which they used to create stunning stop-motion videos from their original artwork. The project deepened their understanding of art and technology and fostered their creativity and problem-solving skills. Rebecca's successful integration of Canva is a testament to the power and unique experiences that can be achieved when integrating technology into the classroom and how our unique coaching cycle is helping teachers embrace innovative tools and unlock new possibilities for their students. Here's just a small clip of some of those examples.
That child could not have a driver's license anytime soon.
It all worked out.
All right, so now that you've heard from the team, we'd like for you to hear from some of the teachers that were involved in this coaching cycle themselves.
Once a week, my class has the opportunity to have Genius Hour, and that's essentially a time where they get to spend focusing on a passion project of theirs. They research it, and then they have to share it out with the world, and that could be in any variety of format, specifically technology. And then sharing your podcasts with them. Casey from the Tech Department really helped me vamp up the creativity level in my classroom.
So who's your audience?
What do you love about Masked Wolf?
She helps the kids create video podcasts. They have made interactive- She helps the kids create video podcasts. They have made interactive websites. They have also created movie book trailers with soundtracks attached. She really improved and helped me, um, look at areas that, um, just needed a little bit more technology-driven lessons, helped lift that level of engagement. Technology is seamlessly woven throughout my Genius Hour lessons, and there's such high level of engagements. The kids want to spend all day creating and building and sharing. So the one-on-one coaching model I love because you can work one-on-one with somebody that's an expert in their field, and you build that relationship with that person. You can ask the questions you wouldn't normally get to ask. If we're going to continue to build technology-driven classrooms with, you know, deeper critical thinking, collaborative efforts amongst the students, this coaching style is, is the way to go.
So you guys can go get your Chromebook first out of the Chromebook cart. If you guys are on Google Classroom, we're going to go ahead and open that up. I decided to become a part of this coaching model because I was, um, this is my twelfth-year teaching year at the school, and I definitely wanted to integrate more technology-based integration into my classroom. When I talked with Jeff Wagner about using AI tools in my classroom, I took a lesson that I've already done in my class, and I used that technology to help make my lesson a little bit more integrated, uh, with technology. And I took, uh, the kids', uh, lesson on using stop motion. Uh, and we took our stop-motion videos and made a title slide with their designs using AI and Canva. Students were super engaged with actually figuring out how, um, they could take the AI images and relate it to the artwork in their storyline of their stop motion that they've already been working on. So there was a lot of wow's and a lot of like, oh, this is cool. We should put this here. A lot of excitement about how to relate the two together. You guys are going to be making Zen Tangos for your next project. So this coaching model has helped me with my career as a teacher because I, uh, feel like now I can learn, use AI or any technology to integrate with the art lessons I'm doing because art and technology are so, so intertwined nowadays, especially with our students. And so this has allowed me to, uh, kind of combine both the art-making and technology together. I think that the coaching model is probably the best professional development tool that I've actually had out there because it met my individual needs.
We're going to get started, so I want to make sure you have time to do everything. Read through it. See if you can fill in the words. Make it make sense. And my goal was to increase engagement in my class, and I wanted a way to really keep them involved at my pace. It was very simple and very helpful. So you're like cracking a code. When you tell them what you're trying to do and give them some content, they can run with it and use things that maybe you're not aware of, that you didn't know existed.
If it contains cells, it's biotic.
And they add tools to your toolbox so that you can then improve upon your lessons as you go. Well, my choice was, was Paradek. And what it helps me do is it helps take a slides presentation and make it into a teacher-paced, activities-embedded plan for the kids so that I'm controlling the Google Slides instead of them going through them quickly and just filling in their notes. And I'm also embedding activities to get them to practice the few slides I just taught them to see, can they now do it? We talked about it, but can you apply it? And so the fact that I am now in control of it, um, and I have those interactives embedded, helps them stay engaged because I get a report at the end of class, and I can see who's participating and who's not. So it helps me hold them accountable, and it helps them have something to actively be involved in as I'm teaching them new content. If we're going with quantitative, we're giving numbers. As a teacher, it's very important that we constantly strive to be better, to learn more, and to change our practice. You know, education isn't what it was 20 years ago. And I think it's important that we gain the tools and the knowledge of how to engage this age of students so that they are interested in learning. The technology team is fabulous. You know, they'll start at any level that you are, they'll start you there. I think as a teacher, it's very important that we constantly strive to be better, to learn more. And I think it's important that we gain the tools and the knowledge of how to engage this age of students so that they are interested in learning. I consider it just adding tools to my toolbox to make me a better teacher.
All right. So that, uh, we've kicked off coaching cycles for second semester, and they're well underway. So we're excited to see what our teachers and students can create this semester. And up on the, the last slide up here is, uh, all the other ways that this team supports teachers. Coaching cycle's only a part of what they do, so, um, at this time, I'll answer any questions you have about the new coaching cycle.
I've got a couple of things. First, um, I had wonderful presentation. I, you know, I think we talk so much about teacher retention and recruitment, and I think when you look at a program like this, uh, it, it speaks to the support that we're providing our, our classrooms. Uh, and, and that's a huge component when you're talking about retention is, is making sure that teachers feel supported in what they're doing in the classroom when engaging children. So I appreciate what the team's doing. Um, just a quick question. It was interesting to see the, the slides with, uh, or the presentations talking specifically about AI. Um, and, and how much is that playing into what teachers are wanting to do in their classrooms versus what you're able to, to sort of engage them with, uh, related to AI?
So we have, um, tried to empower teachers to use AI, um, when it's appropriate and to encourage them to use AI with students when it's appropriate, but give them the control. So, um, you know, we have thirteen tools, I think, approved for teachers to use with AI components in it. And then, um, you know, we have modified our acceptable use policy to provide some guidance for teachers and students on use of AI in the classroom. Did that help?
It did. It did. No, no. I, and, and I'm assuming that there's a, a pretty strong desire for classroom teachers to figure out what those tools are, how to use them, and that's, that's what your team's doing to support them?
Absolutely. I mean, I think just today, Megan was at Catawba Ridge High School doing, um, AI training for teachers during their planning periods. So we're actively engaged. We have some, um, summer AI PD sessions, um, that we've, we did last semester. I mean, last summer, probably do something like that again. So we're actively trying to, um, you know, educate our teachers on AI and, and our students on responsible use of AI.
We've also had a great opportunity working with, um, Student Services Department to offer AI sessions for administrators as well so that they're aware of what their teachers and their students are utilizing, um, and also how they can kind of harness that to help them be more effective and efficient at their jobs as well.
Thank you.
I think it's pretty exciting because, you know, technology in the classroom is used for a lot of different ways, and depending on the classroom, and I love seeing that it's, it's for the benefit of whatever the subject matter is or whatever the topic is to see the engagement. It is a far cry from the, the book report, right, that, that I was having to do back in a long, long time ago. Yeah. I mean, really, much more exciting.
I'm curious to know who's going to draw the short straw to technology eyes, Michelle. Don't everybody jump at once. I wouldn't. I'm just saying.
Anything else?
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, one more. We've got the first reading of the naming of the 4K facility with Mr. Young.
Good evening. As you recall, last May-June, uh, I think it was the last meeting, May-first meeting, June. We had the privilege to name Elementary 12 and Middle School 7 Flint Hill. At that time, we did discuss naming the 4K program after the town's all-black public school during segregation, and we recommended George Fish, um, Early Childhood Center. So after, before and after meeting with the community, after that meeting, we did, we did have several community members that reached out to us. Um, George Fish is a historical marker, and I think a lot of the community wanted to keep it that way, keep that name as the historical marker. But the site, um, is actually located near Fort Mill YMCA at the complex. It kind of between the Springfield Parkway and the Paradise Community. So when the community reached back out to us, we had some discussions with them. And the community of Paradise actually gets his name. I don't know if you remember this story, but Rudy Sanders stood up here and said that the neighboring communities called it Paradise because they could hear the women and the children harmonizing gospel songs. And so they said it sounded like paradise. So after discussions with them, uh, we would like to change our recommendation to name it Paradise Early Childhood Center. And we're just excited to honor not only the George Fish School, but also Paradise, the Paradise of the community. So if we name it Paradise Early Childhood Center, we're recommending that. We're also recommending the same mascot, which was the dolphin, which was the mascot of George Fish School, and the same colors, which was the sea star blue and the yellow, um, for the school colors. So what questions do you have or comments? I don't believe in policy as to be a first reading, second reading, but we did want to come to you today and present it to you, and then you can vote that first, uh,
Yeah, because it's not an act.
Board meeting in March. It's not an action item, and we did that on purpose. We just wanted to, to present it to you first, so. Any questions?
I, 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 I know there was some heartburn about calling it something fish with a dolphin, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it was kind of weird, but dolphin's a mammal.
That's right.
Yeah.
Hey, you might want to mention, we've been in communication with the.
Yes. Yes, we have been in communication with, um, a lot of the folks that came here and spoke during, uh, public participation that night, that first meeting in June. I think it was June 4th or June 7th. Um, and, uh, we've got a lot of good feedback, actually on email. Dr. Ebs and I got, we, we emailed him and said we were recommending this, and a lot of good feedback from them. They're very excited to, to honor the Paradise community.
Well, and I know not everybody in our community is probably familiar with the history of or even the location of Paradise. But I also think when you think about an early learning center, an upbeat name like Paradise is exciting because being able to have learning occurring with any four-year-old in our community now is pretty exciting. So I, I like the idea of the sort of upbeat.
When I think of Paradise, I think of the ocean, so dolphins is the.
Me too.
Great mascot. All right. Thank y'all.
All right. Um, but we do have an action item. Just wasn't that one. Um, Ms. Lord, do you want to explain what this is all about?
I'm glad to. So in your packet, I provided a resolution, um, that was drafted by our, um, bond, uh, legal counsel, Mr. Theodore DeBose. And what this does, when we issue any bond, he, uh, will put the wording in the bond resolution that you approved that allows us, um, by law to go back and cover any expenditures that we have paid 60 days prior to your approval of the resolution. Um, sometimes this happens when we are in the planning, early planning phases of a project, and we have some costs come in, um, and we go ahead and pay those invoices from either general fund or most of those will get paid from other capital projects or interest earnings, that type of thing. But we keep every, um, project or every referendum issue in a separate capital project fund from an accounting standpoint. And so this allows us to go back and, um, reimburse if we have paid those invoices out of another fund. Um, but this one is a little different. This is related to our new energy savings project with Snyder Electric. And this will be funded from a, um, tax-exempt special obligation bond issue along with the 10 million from the 2024 bond referendum and the 1.8 million that you approved, um, in excess general funds. Um, I believe that was June 30th of 2023. So we've got three different sources of revenue coming in for this project, and we're currently, um, utilizing the 10 million bond referendum proceeds first. But we're also working through, um, the details of the specific pieces of that project and which ones that he feels more aligned with these different funding sources from a bond legal standpoint, being tax-exempt bonds. And so he, um, asked that you, that's why he developed just a separate resolution. You will approve, I will bring you the resolution to issue, um, the special obligation bonds and in March at our meeting. Um, but he wanted to go ahead and get this in place to cover us on the 60 days. So this one is specifically related to the energy savings project that we have, um, contracted with Snyder Electric on. Does that help explain?
So, uh, from a, from a motion standpoint, it will be the, the bolded resolution component, not.
Correct.
Reading the whole thing.
Correct.
Be like, please stop.
Yes.
Um, but we are looking at that maximum ex- not to exceed number of 31 million?
Correct.
Okay.
But, but in layman's terms, what we're doing with this is reimbursing burdens that have already been spent from the.
Other funds.
Other funds, not just the general fund.
Correct. And, and it would only, it would be, um, a small amount of dollars where the timing, um, we are, we have been holding off on issuing the special obligation bonds until we absolutely needed to, to save taxpayers on the interest cost. And so if we have, if we utilize the full 10 million and we have some invoices that come in, we need to go ahead and process to those vendors, but we haven't gone to market and issued those bonds and closed on those bonds and received those proceeds, this covers us if we have this situation.
Okay.
So it's basically.
Basically.
It's basically reimbursing us to various accounts, whether it's in, in a personal household, my money market account, which is my savings account. I just transferred money to my checking account to pay this, and now I'm going to put that money back in that money market savings account.
Exactly. Exactly. Yes.
And there's no, there's no tax implications from what we're doing here. This is just.
Absolutely no tax implications.
The mechanics of moving the money.
Yes. It's just more of an accounting bond law issue to make sure that, um, we have on record that, um, we are approved. I am approved by you to reimburse those funds.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration for the resolution expressing the intent of Fort Mill School District Number Four of York County, South Carolina, to reimburse itself from the proceeds of certain tax-exempt obligations for the expenditure of certain monies for certain improvements. I can see you doing that, that I can't read, at various facilities of the school district and other matters relating thereto in an amount not to exceed 31 million dollars.
Thank you. Related to the energy savings.
Energy savings.
Project.
Project.
Second. I'm not sure we got it all in that time.
I know, right? All right. So we have a motion, a second to enter into a resolution.
Not to exceed 31 million for.
Certain monies for the energy savings projects.
Reimbursements.
Reimbursements for this energy saving projects. Um, is there any discussion?
No.
Clear as mud, right? Um, all those in motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
What, what she said.
Theo will be very happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Um, all right. You're back up at the end again.
Back. Okay. Let's start with, uh, calendar of events. I saw one that I messed up on and didn't change. Um, of course, tonight's board meeting, the 4th of February. School board visits on Monday, beginning at Riverview and ending at Fort Mill High. We move one, we move the aquatic center to another time, another date, I believe. The 14th, though, is, should read, let me see, Joe, help me with this. It should read, um, e-learning day.
Is it still a teacher work day and an e-learning day?
Yes. So those of you who couldn't hear, Joe, it is a teacher work day and an e-learning day for the water main break back in whenever that happened.
Last semester.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
And so that's changed. We'll make the change on the minutes, but that should be changed. Of course, Presidents' Day, no school. Then the School Boards, uh, Association Conference, Annual Conference, 21st through the 23rd.
Actually, the 20th through the 23rd, because some will do the Thursday, um, Board Share Workshop.
Right. Okay. Then the two-hour early release day, then, uh.
And then what's not on the calendar anymore is the 19th because we will not be meeting, the, the tentative board meeting that was on the calendar is tentative for the 19th is not happening.
Right. We, we left it off.
So it's not there on purpose.
Good. I didn't see it, so I didn't, you're right.
It's not there.
Uh, going, going on into March, I think Leanne talked about March 3rd. Going going on into March, I think Leanne talked about March 3rd being the first uh the public hearing for the impact fees in York. Then on the 4th, the board meeting, school board visits to Nation Ford, Sugar Creek, Oak Grove at on the 10th. The 14th, no s- school for students and staff, potential weather makeup day, that's still right, Joe? Okay. Teacher work day on the 17th, school board meeting on the 18th, the public session at 6:00. Right now, that looks like it'll hold firm, then the two-hour early release. Did I miss any other days that you may have on your calendar that I don't?
For March, there is a COSBA, which is the National Association that we are members of by way of membership in SCSBA. Their annual national conference in Atlanta is kicking off on the 20th with a, I'm going to call it an urban boards, they've changed the name of it, but I can't recall the name exactly, but an urban board um one-day symposium on the front end, and then the 22nd, 23rd, 21st, 22nd, 23rd in Atlanta um to complete that out.
Okay, any other dates?
Alright.
On the on the March 14th day, is is that something that we're, is is that part of the discussion of?
My understanding is that we will need to decide whether, because we've, we will have used three.
E-learning.
Makeup slash e-learning days.
Can we explain?
Yes, we can try. We can, we can try.
Yeah, so under uh state law when it comes to makeup days, they do require that all districts make up the first three missed days, uh whether that's the weather or an emergency situation.
Right.
Such as the water main break, they require that all districts make that top up. Like you recall, we did make up one under associated with hurricane, we did e-learning and made up one of our snow days already, and we have this one scheduled for 14th, so that will fit our three days.
Okay.
At that point, the law allows boards to forgive the next four through six, I believe, so you have the option to give three days after that circumstance. And then of course, if you were to be in a real emergency situation like some other people were with a hurricane, didn't ask you in the legislature uh bringing beyond those days that they're allowed, of course, to look at what we're getting. So after the 14th, we will have made our three mandatory makeup days, and we do have the option to look at a, it is kind of more than four, or we can look at a makeup day for that as well, too. So that's, we're wrapped up.
So Joe, ju- just for clarification, the first three, we have to make up, absolutely.
And we have.
The, and we and we have. Uh, the next three, the board can decide if we need to make those up. Anything beyond that, the state requires, it would go to.
Yeah.
That was actually uh changed when they did some changes to the law about that, because it used to be you had to make up the three, and then anything after that, the state legislature had to to deal with. And they made that change to allow local boards to uh look at whether or not they wanted to to at least do that short window in between.
So the only, the only concern I see is that we are not scheduled for another board meeting until March the 4th, and that would be awfully late to tell people whether or not students have something to do on March the 14th. So we may have to do a special call meeting so that we can vote on that, because I assume that would require a vote for us to waive a day. We would, we would have to agree.
If you're looking at the calendar, some people, they ask, you know, why was the teacher work day just scheduled in March not labeled as makeup day? That is the last day of the state mandated letters training.
Right.
And those two things are just not accounted.
Thanks for clarification there.
So unfortunately, I guess I would say to to parents that are wondering, we'll have to figure out how quickly we can pull together and make a decision, but we'll make a decision as quickly as we can about the March 14th date.
Yeah.
Monday at the school visits.
We may be able to do it as early as Monday if we can confirm that we've got the right attendance and put that out quickly, so. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to enrollment. This is where it gets a little wonky. Each year, we had to back out the winter grad, so we, you see, we were up to as high as 18, 4, 8, 9 last month. Now we're showing minus 82 to that, 76 of them are graduates, so we just had to let it settle in. I think last year, we ended up making up the the whole difference before we got to to June, I believe.
Yes.
But uh the numbers are what they are, 18, 407 as of yesterday, 2-2. Yeah. Questions about that? Then we get into the teacher attendance, and leading the way at the Fort Mill, at the high school level is 95.66 Fort Mill High. The middle school level, Fort Mill Middle at 96.364, and Dobie's let up the elementaries at 96.229. And if my Clemson math works, the winner, the district winner is Fort Mill Middle, 96.364. So congrats to Fort Mill Middle on leading the way.
Thanks, God, y'all. Amazing teacher attendance.
Absolutely, yes, because we're still well above 90.
That's right.
And I've done enough damage for tonight, so I'm doing three.
Yeah, so we um, we actually worked quickly during our hour between 5 and 6, so we are not in need of a second executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
So with that, we're adjourned.
That's that's less exciting for all than they got to go home anyways, but it's really exciting for us.